Good evening. I'm going to call to order the Sparks Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, July 5th, and we'll start with roll call, please.
Commissioner Vanowak.
Here.
Commissioner Perry.
President.
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
Commissioner Fuehens.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner.
General.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for general public comment and is limited to no more than three minutes. And I have some requests to speak, so we'll start with Mark Nichols, please.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry?
If you'll please state your name and address for the record, not when you sit.
Mark A. Nichols. I live at 1791 Southview Drive in the beautiful city of Sparks, Nevada. And I don't have a speech planned or anything. The only reason I'm here is because I haven't been here before regarding this particular issue. Item number 11 is related to the comments I have to make. You know, this whole Wild Creek High School project has just been an abomination. It's been mismanaged. The public has been kept in the dark. Every time the Washoe County School District ratchets up another notch and makes another move toward their pet project of this new high school, the public isn't aware, made aware of it. And this is a perfect example here. You're considering relocating the power lines, which, by the way, I don't have a problem with that. I've hit those power lines before with a golf ball, and I just assumed they weren't there, but that's neither here nor there. It's just, all of a sudden, you folks need to make a decision as to whether or not you want to allow whoever it is that Public Works, Nevada Power, whoever is doing this, to relocate this corridor, this Public Works corridor, to make room for the high school. And it's just another step toward destroying this beautiful golf course to build this high school in a location that it just makes absolutely no sense whatsoever to build a high school there. Forget about the fact that you're destroying a beautiful golf course to do it. It's just, it's a bad location for a high school, as you will soon discover when it happens, which it probably will. You know, it's government. I hope it doesn't. But it's just sad that this beautiful, open space golf course, for us seniors, senior golfers, we don't have anything in the city of Sparks. What do we have? We have a couple of golf courses. We've got, you know, the links at Kylie Ranch. Come on. I enjoy this golf course and try to get a tee time on Tuesday. Since Duncan has taken it over, I'm sure it's making money. And try to get a golf tee time on Tuesday when they have $25 Senior Day. It's packed. You can't find a parking place in the golf course. Last Tuesday was Senior Day. It was the first tee was there with the kids. I mean, it's just a wonderful resource for this city, and I just hate to see it destroyed for a high school that could be built. Any number of places, there are thousands of undeveloped acres of land in Sparks. If you want to build it in Sparks, fine. In Washoe County, to build that high. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have John Hesse.
Long way down.
Yes, it is.
John Hesse, 3035 Malapai, Sparks, Nevada, if you needed that information. I am. Hey, I'm just here as a homeowner next to the golf course, and I certainly think the choice of putting a high school on the golf course is just not a good idea. There's been a lot of talk, a lot of planning. We've heard a lot from the RSCBA. We've heard a lot from the school board. Washoe County, I'm not even sure who owned the land, to tell you the truth, but anyway, and that probably doesn't really matter, but there's, they're just like the gentleman spoke before I did. There are other locations for this golf course. I just, I'm sure there are other locations for it. The building of the population seems to be going out more of the Pyramid Highway. It seems like there's a lot more land out that way than there would be in a congested area. And I know, you know, we figure, we configure Hug High School to a trade school and whatnot. Sound like a good idea, but I think that the high school, and especially if they're going to build one that's pretty high dollar, going to last for many years, that Wild Creek is not the place for it. If you just reconsidered that a little bit more and take a good look at some other locations, it would certainly please a lot of people in my neighborhood. And I think that the golf course itself, with the nine hole over there, the kids can still continue to play it. It wouldn't hopefully be as crowded, and it's just not a good idea, in my opinion. I won't use any more of your time, and I'll go ahead and address you now. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Gail Miller.
Hi, thank you. Gail Miller, 5200 Malapai Way, Sparks, Nevada. I'm concerned about, first of all, that a high school's being built or possibly being built on Wild Creek at all, for all the many reasons that you've probably heard before. It's a beautiful golf course. There are many people that like to play on this wonderful public golf course. You can even enjoy it if you drive by. I am concerned also on item number 11 that you're to look at today, which says, "Consideration of impossible action on a request for the Spark City Council to sponsor an amendment to the 2012 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to relocate a regional utility corridor." There is a pending injunction lawsuit, and to spend the money to go forward with this right now seems like it's premature. I think that you should wait to recommend this, if at all, until you know whether or not they're going to be able to build this very expensive golf, I mean, high school. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Kim Tracy.
Hi, Kim Tracy, 5595 High Rock Way, Sparks. I'm here both in the concern for preserving the golf course, obviously. None of you have heard very much from any of us, and we've been in this fight from the beginning, but also as a taxpayer. And I would like to say that I would really appreciate if at some point we felt like some of our city officials, the Spark city officials, were backing their citizens, and that's us. This is going to be an expensive expenditure to move that line. Theoretically, the school had done their due diligence. They've said that from day one, and I can tell you, from day one, the argument's an ever-fluid thing, such as, "They have to use this location because this location is good, because then they wouldn't have to have double sessions in Sparks so that they can start the building initially." Well, there is a lawsuit pending. I don't know if this is the reason, but that initial start date on construction has been pushed back a year. So to make this move now, to move the power lines at the expense of citizens of Sparks, is premature and should be, at the very least, put off until a future date. We don't need to spend that money. I'd also like to know if anybody's considered who's going to do the upgrade for the sewer systems for Sparks when all of that comes down. I'd like to point out that one of the things that I find a little bit offensive is, and I'm not, I don't want to sound like a horrible person here, but the city of Reno seems to have taken one of their most least-popular schools and seems to be pushing it onto us, onto our Sparks property. I've always noticed in the city of Sparks, the signs always say Parks and Recreation. Why in the world do we need to put any school on one of our recreational areas? Why don't they find an area that's already cleared? I mean, it's been clarified time and time again that the school could be built on BLM land, more than likely, and you'll hear Mr. Etchardt say that they've done their due diligence and all this whatnot. None of those other sites were ever checked out. The due diligence that was done clearly wasn't as due as they stated it was. Otherwise, these lines and the problem with having to change the, the planning commission having to make recommendations to change these lines, that cost wasn't included. And I'd like to make sure that that doesn't fall on us, although it does fall on us to pay for it, because whether it's WC1 or it's the city of Sparks, I have to pay for that and you have to pay for that. And this is just the first little tidbit that's being thrown out of something that wasn't exactly covered in the due diligence studies. I'd like to point that out, and like, like all of you to think long and hard about the fact that this is, they've already pushed back the building for a year, but now they're already asking for this. Why don't we wait and see what happens with the lawsuit, with the building, before we recommend any movement of any power lines at great expense? I think that the taxpayers pay enough taxes here, just in our, in our gas tax alone, covering WC1, and I think that we should try to keep it in check, and we're counting on you folks to help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Wesley Griffin.
Good evening. I'm Wesley Griffin, 4701 Weddakin Road in Sparks. I've been very intimately involved in the Save Wild Creek group, and we would like to see Wild Creek saved. It's not just for Sparks, it's for our whole community. Golf in our area, we've lost lots of golf courses. We have an area that's growing, that you're going to need more golf. If this golf course goes away, what is going to replace it? Who's going to bring us more parks? Who's going to bring us more open spaces and green spaces in our area? What would it cost to replace that? Thirty, forty million dollars? And if you take a look at this and you just, I mean, we don't have, you know, I saw the other day where some award for architecture was given, a contract award, 2.83 million dollars. You know, if we had a couple hundred thousand dollars to prepare some of these fancy presentations, I mean, we could blow your mind away. But the bottom line is, is you take and add this up, what's going to happen? We're going to have a high school. We're going to have a high school whether they build it on a golf course or not, but they're going to take away a big part of our golf course. It's going to hurt the golf, the golf in our community. We've had golf pros come in and say, you know, "Our area's growing. We don't have enough golf as we, as we need it right now." So they're going to come in and even take more away. So you add this up, and we lose part of a golf course, we get a school, we're going to have the school regardless. So it's a, it's a some, you know, I mean, just basic math says, basic arithmetic says, we're losing something. We're losing something in this area. If they put a school someplace else and we keep the golf course, we all win from that. We all win from that. And we're all for a school. We want our kids to, you know, have a good education. I look at, at the way that our school system seems to be planning. I mean, seldom do I see anything that they do that I think really makes a whole lot of sense. I mean, our educational system is ranked near the bottom. You take a look at how they're spending our money, our tax dollars, and it, I can't say that I give them my vote of confidence, and I certainly don't give them my vote of confidence here. This whole thing started off under the radar. We didn't even know about it until five public entities came together and voted to go ahead with this, so they kept us under the radar. Is this where our government is supposed to work? To where things happen, where we pay our, we pay our tax dollars, and our tax dollars goes to fund big public studies for people to put things on the public that actually harms the public? We have an opportunity here to say, "Wait, wait a minute. Let's, let's have a look at this a little further. We do have a lawsuit going on. We think we're going to win it." This is against the regional planning agency, our regional plan. First of all, it is destroying green spaces and public recreation areas, which it shouldn't be doing, and it is moving something into a community that's going to significantly change the character of our community. Both of those are stated goals for our regional plan. So we just throw that out the window now that because somebody can come in and make a fancy presentation? I hope not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Liz Griffin.
Liz Griffin, 4701 Weddakin Road, Sparks, Nevada. I probably won't even take three minutes because I think a lot of the points have been covered. I want to go back and, first of all, I'm not a golfer, which is probably to the advantage of the golfers there, so I'm not biased by, "Got to have a golf course." But I see a green space. I see a real treasure to the citizens, citizens of the city of Sparks. It's a green space that is not going to be replaced. We all know that. It's also a wildlife sanctuary, for Pete's sake. It is a treasure that we should retain. I want to emphasize this spending of public funds without a determination yet on this injunction that has been filed. I would hate to venture a guess what it has already, I've gone through this packet, by the way, what it has probably cost the school district, therefore, our students, our parents, the city of Sparks, what it has cost in the funds that have been expended toward Rogers just to come up with this. And yet, we do not have a decision that that school is being built there. I feel like this is wrong. I feel like it's a gross misuse of the taxpayers' funds. I feel like it's cheating our children also of vital, vital materials that they need sorely for their education. We're not exactly at the top of the heap here in education. I can see that money being spent much more wisely. Once again, it's the cart before the horse. It's kind of, "Well, let's check it out and do it and pay for it and check the fine print later." No, I think this injunction is important, and I think that everything needs to stop, including the spending of funds towards this project until that has been adjudicated. I see money trickling, trickling, trickling out that I believe needs to remain stationary until this matter is resolved. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. That's it for my request to speak. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak during public comment that didn't have a chance to sign in? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Fuehens, to approval agenda as submitted.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kerry, I'll make the second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, move along to approval of minutes. Approval of the minutes of the June 5th Planning Commission Study Session. There aren't any... Commissioner Kerry.
Thank, I think I beat Commissioner Fuehens at the button. Minutes, study session minutes look good to me. I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Okay. Have a first?
Commissioner Fuehens, second.
Okay, have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is review of possible approval of the minutes of the June 7th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. If there are no changes. Commissioner Kerry.
Madam Chair, all 135 pages of the meeting minutes look good to me. I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fuehens will second that.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Announcements, committee reports?
Madam Chair, Armando Anales, Assistant Committee Services Director. I have no announcements.
Mr. Anales, I'm sorry. I think you need to turn on your mic.
There we go. Excuse me. Madam Chair, I have no announcements, committee reports, or informational items.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll move along to public hearing items. First, PCN 18-0029, conditional use permit for cell tower.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Karen Malby, Development Service Manager. Before you, is a conditional use permit request to allow for the construction of a cupola cell tower at a location that cannot comply with the required separation distance from an existing cell tower. The site is approximately 2.4 acres in size. It's in the planned development for DeAndrea. It's located at 3080 Vista Boulevard. Here's the vicinity map outlined in cyan is this, this portion of the shopping center. Here is Bering and DeAndrea, and this would be Vista. The proposed cell tower carrier is Verizon. The equipment will be housed in the existing building with the antennas and radio equipment, radio remote units inside the new cupola to be added on top. This request for the conditional use permit and cell tower to be installed within this cupola will be on top of the building. As you can see here, the arrow right here, this is the pointing to where they would like to locate this cupola. It's on top of the tower for Edward Jones. This is the existing cell tower here, which is actually a flagpole. There are ordinance, the zoning ordinance requires that there's a 750-foot separation between cell towers, so that's why we are doing the conditional use permit. The cell equipment will be accessed through the existing utility room in the back of the building, and with the utility room, there is a ladder within that room which will be used to access the antennas and radio remote units within the cupola. The cupola will be constructed on top of the existing tower. One of the existing shopping centers buildings has, which would be a total height of 46 feet overall, when you add the cupola to the existing building. The cupola design will have the same color and materials as the existing building. However, concrete tiles cause signal problems, so the applicant is proposing to use roofing material of the fiberglass reinforced panels, but the shape, texture, and color will look like the terracotta roof tiles to match the existing building. The sides of the cupola will be a textured stucco paint to match the existing stucco and finish. This is condition seven on the conditions of approval. The proposed cell tower and associated equipment will be unmanned and visited by a technician approximately once a month to perform maintenance. Now, I'd like to go through the findings. There are five findings. The first one is finding C1, which is compliance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed cell tower and associated equipment will improve the Verizon Cellular Service in Sparks, complying with goal CC1. The proposed stealth design of the cupola housing the cell tower facility promotes quality design and blends the cell tower facility into the shopping center, which advances policy CC9. Addressing finding C2, which is compatibility with the existing or permitted uses on the adjacent properties. The proposed cell tower is to be in an area in mixed land uses. The proposed cell cupola will be located within an existing shopping center with residential housing to the east and west. The proposed cell tower will be incorporated into the architecture of the existing shopping center, and a cell tower is considered a utility use, which is consistent with commercial uses. The use will be a low-intensity commercial land use staff feels. Addressing finding C3, which is impairment of natural resources, the property has been zoned and used for commercial shopping center for over a decade. No additional impact on available natural resources is anticipated as a result of the construction of this new cupola and associated equipment. Addressing finding C4, which is addressing unidentified impacts, which are in Sparks Municipal Code 20.03046, our wireless communications section of the code. There are eight, oh, excuse me, eight criteria. The first criteria is to address the height of the proposed tower. As I stated, the proposed tower to the top of the cupola will be 46 feet, which complies with the DeAndrea Development Standards Handbook. The handbook says that architectural embellishments up to 55 feet are permitted. The Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority indicated it does not have any concerns with this request. Addressing item two, proximity of the tower to residential structures and residential boundaries. The Sparks Municipal Code states that there must be a separation between cell towers and residential units as 200 feet or 300% the height of the tower, whichever is greater. In this case, using the 46 feet, the 200 feet would be greater in distance, looking at the closest residence that is located at 268 feet. Third item is the nature of the uses on the adjacent and nearby properties. The proposed cupola cell tower would be located within an existing shopping center in a commercial area adjacent to Vista Boulevard, which is an arterial. Staff views a cellular tower as compatible with commercial uses. Fourth item is surrounding topography. The proposed cupola cell tower will be located on an existing building and would have no impact on the topography of the area. Five is the surrounding tree coverage and foliage. One of the reasons for constructing this cupola cell tower atop the existing building in the shopping center is to not impact the existing landscaping and parking. Item six is the design of the tower, reducing or eliminating visual obtusiveness. The proposed cell tower will be located within a constructed cupola on top of an existing tower. The equipment will be located in the existing building. The cupola is designed to be the same colors and material as the existing building. Let me get through the plans here. I'll show you. Oh. What happened there? There we go. So this is looking at the property from Vista Boulevard, and you can see in the top one is what it looks like now, and then in the bottom is showing the little cupola here. Here's another looking from, gee, this is, from Armore Drive, looking towards the property. So this would be from the backside of the property, and you can see this is the existing area here, and they're adding the cupola. This is also looking from Vista Boulevard. Here's the existing tower, and this will be the cupola on top of it. Item seven is the proposed ingress and egress. Access to the cupola cell tower will be via Vista Boulevard through the shopping center parking lot. Access to the cellular equipment will be through the utility room in the existing building. Item eight, which is the availability and suitable, of suitable existing cell towers and other structures or alternative technologies not requiring the use of the structure. The applicant did conduct an analysis to select this location for the cell tower to serve Verizon. The applicant used a search radius of approximately half a mile and identified 11 potential sites, including this proposed location. None of the other sites ultimately met Verizon's objectives, resulting in this conditional use permit. I did discuss in more detail in my background section of the staff report on why they chose the site. One of the big items was that in the existing cell tower, the, if they would to put their equipment on that cell tower, there are several problems. The first one is they would be having to take away parking and landscaping to put the ground equipment in, and the other thing is, right now, the cell tower is not designed structurally to accommodate additional equipment on it. Addressing the last finding C5, which is public notice, the city mailed out 68 notices to property owners and was published in the Reno Gazette-Journal on June 21st, 2018. To date, staff has received only one phone call, and that was from the president of the DeAndreas Homeowners Association. After discussing the project with the president, he expressed... After discussing the project with the president, he expressed no concerns. That concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending approval with seven conditions. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I'll open a public hearing. Are there any requests to speak? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion, questions, possible motion. Commissioner K.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question for staff. Is this shopping center maxed out on its building signage?
I could check on that, but I don't know.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at, and this is more for the record than anything, would a, one of the tenants in the building be able to come in and put a sign on the, on the cupola, since it'd be part of the building?
That, we do not allow signs on cell towers, so I think technically we would say that this is a cell tower, so I think we would determine that they could not put signage on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make, Commissioner Reed, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve conditional use permit CU 180009, associated with PCN 18-0029, adopting finding C1 through C5, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 7 listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Brock, I second the motion. Do you have it first and a second? Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to PCN 18-0020, conditional use permit for a minor recreational facility.
Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Ian Crin, senior planner. Make sure I get into the microphone. This, as mentioned, is a request for a conditional use permit to locate a minor recreational use in the industrial district at a location here on Heimer, Heimer Avenue, 1580 Heimer. It's actually in the area, kind of right in there. This is a minor recreational use, which are permitted in the industrial district, subject to a conditional use permit. The nature of this batting cage is not one that would be open to the public. It is actually, the request is for an instructional service location. It would actually be individual training for members, for, for kids that are working on improving their, their baseball skills. And so, it'd be an opportunity for them to use batting cages and some of the other space there to work on those skills, but wouldn't be an open to the public and have the traffic generation associated with that style of use. The proposed use will be located in a 10,000-square-foot occupancy within a larger 40,000-square-foot building. The actual space occupied by the batting cages themselves and the office is 2,855 square feet, based on the submitted areas by the applicant that would demand 19 parking spaces. However, staff has recommended a condition that would require them to provide a traffic analysis, not traffic analysis, a parking analysis and a parking plan for how they're going to park those spaces. There are 13 parking spaces located directly in front of the, the site. This is a little bit better plan, showing that these will be the batting cages, this will be the office and the restrooms, and there are 13 parking spaces located here, as well as parking spaces located in front of Leprey Construction, who is the, the building owner. The, the hours of operation that are being proposed for the batting cage use, for the training use, would not conflict with those hours of operation for the, for the Leprey Construction, so they felt like they would be able to meet the parking demand, and as mentioned, staff is requesting and requiring them to provide a parking analysis. We feel that the parking ratios may actually be higher in the code for recreational use than what this use would actually demand, so we'd like to kind of see that, and then also have the applicant provide a detailed plan of how they're going to park it and any required parking agreements between them and adjacent occupancies that may be needed along those lines. So, the staff is recommending approval of this request. There are five findings relating to conditional use permits. Finding C1 requires the proposed use as a compliance with the comp plan. The comprehensive plan does list recreational uses as permitted uses within the industrial land use category. We also feel that this use meets support goals NG1 and NG2, which both relate to the provision of non-residential uses and a variety of those non-residential uses in areas of the city. Finding C2 requires compatibility with adjacent land uses. All of the adjacent properties are also zoned industrial. This site has a minor recreational use, with the exception of the soccer location next door. Most of them are industrial uses that have a more eight-to-five timeline, and they, so they would not conflict with the majority of the, the uses in the area. Finding C3 addresses the impairment of natural resources. This site was developed in 1964. They're occupying an existing space. We don't feel that there's any additional impact to natural resources by this project. Finding C4 requires that identified impacts be addressed. Staff believes those impacts can be addressed through the five proposed conditions of approval that staff is proposing. And then finally, C5 requires that the item, that their notice is required. Public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on June 21, and 32 notices were mailed to all property owners within 500 feet. As mentioned, staff is recommending approval to Planning Commission of this item. I am available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing item. I will open the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair. I'd like to, just for clarification, on one of the conditions of approval, it says the hour shall be limited four to 10 p.m., and then in the analysis, it says that they will operate evenings from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m.
I did not catch that, as, as mentioned, the, the meeting we had on Tuesday. I'm presenting this for Jonathan Cummins, who's out of town. I, I can't speak to the, the conflict between those two hours of operation and the...
Karen Malby, Development Service Manager. Generally, when we do conditions on the hours of operation, we like to give them some flexible time, so we don't strictly go with the, with the hours that they say unless it's going to be a major conflict, but we allow, like to allow them so that they don't have to come back if they end up wanting a little more time. They don't have to come back and amend their conditional use permit, and that's why we've done it that way. So, they are, at this point, saying those are their hours of operation, but we decided that we would give them a little more time in their condition.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner K.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions about parking. My, my first question is, is, so one of the conditions of approval is requiring a parking analysis to go to staff to be reviewed later. Why don't we have that now?
I don't know why we don't have that now. We didn't ask the applicant to buy that previous...
We can have the applicant come up and answer that. Thank you. Could you please state your name for the record?
Hi, my name's Dominic, and I'm with Leprey Construction.
Last name?
Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Dominic Gonzalez, yeah. And so, I actually did the initial parking analysis for the application, and in talking to Jonathan, when you walk into the facility, you have about 600 square feet of that office area, and the rest of the building is open warehouse. And so, I called Jonathan for clarification on what part of that warehouse would be the actual recreational spot. He said, "Get me the square footage of the batting cages," and that's what we'll use for the application, so that's what we'll use to start with. And so, of that, I think the batting cages are just shy of 3,000 square feet, but you only have one kid in the batting cage at each time. So, even if you take that 3,000 square feet and the 200-square-foot requirement for recreational use, you get just about 15 spots, but you're never going to have that many kids in, in the deal. And then, the rest of the warehouse will be used, there will be some parents there, some coaches there, and then obviously the kids, and if they're not in batting cages, they'll keep them busy with lessons, ground balls, type deal. Of the remaining warehouse space, you won't get over 2,000 square feet of that for the additional kids who are waiting to get their turn in the batting cage. I think between the spots in front of our suite, the suite 110, and then the agreement that Leprey will say that they can use their spots too, we have 26 total spots. There's never going to be more than 20 or 25 bodies in the building, and the majority of those bodies will be kids who can't drive and are getting dropped off by their parents. So, the parking analysis, that was initially done under direction from Jonathan in order to turn in the application, and then a licensed engineer will have to do the one we'll turn to them, but that's why the, the parking analysis differs from what, what was said and why we feel like we have more than enough parking for what they got going on, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate the, the explanation. Just to follow up, so total number of spaces required by, by the code, and how many will you have provided onsite?
Onsite, there's 26. I think after we do the parking analysis, we will probably need 26. There's actually, if you look straight up from where Heimer Avenue is, there is two parallel parking spots there, so we actually have 28. So, I think the parking analysis will come in right at 26 or 27.
Just to clarify, that's provided parking spaces?
Right.
Required by code for the space they have is 19.
Then, one last parking question, while we got Dominic here. So, in your opinion, the, the soccer indoor facility next door, their hours of operation, do they conflict, will they, they will conflict with this proposed conditional use? In terms of parking, will there be, will there be a parking problem?
I don't think there will be a parking problem. There hasn't been a parking problem in the past, and it's a kind of a rare deal where the property owner owns all of those suites, you know, so he keeps a close eye if, even for stuff not as far as parking spots, but if the parking lot is getting littered or stuff, we keep a, he keeps a good eye on making sure that no one is having, having issues. And I think there was a, a food mart in the suite before. The parking requirements for that is even more than, as a whole, and there was no issues when that was there. So, I think as far as the business hours, when they would overlap, I don't foresee any, any issues between.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions from the commissioners? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion, discussion.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Brock. I would like to move to approve conditional use permit CU 18-0008, associated with PCN 18-0022, adopting findings C1 through C5, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the five conditions of approval listed in the staff report. Commissioner Reed, second.
Do you have a first and a second? Any discussion? Commissioner K.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment before the vote, if we may. I had a little, I had a hard time trying to figure out the parking situation with this proposed conditional use. Obviously, one of the key findings we have to make with any conditional use is whether or not it's compatible with the surrounding uses, and with the soccer facility next door and the construction use, and this is kind of an older neighborhood, it was, I had a hard time kind of wrapping my head around it and trying to figure out what was going on. I think my, my preference, and I'm just one commissioner speaking here, but I think my preference moving forward, maybe this could be related to staff, is we could have the parking analysis when we're reviewing these types of uses beforehand. In this case, it's, we're kind of going with staff's recommendation and, and from the applicant. I think it'd be a little bit more helpful and transparent moving forward. But with that being said, I'm going to go with staff on this one. I think, you know, that the appointment-only use for this proposed recreational use is a key finding. I think it can be compatible, so I'm going to be supporting the motion, but just wanted to kind of put that on the record about the parking. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to PCN 18-0031, conditional use permit for vehicle and estate auction sales.
Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Ian Crin, senior planner. This is a request to operate an estate and car auction facility, or business at 155 Glendale. You can see here on the vicinity map, it's actually the, the last occupancy in the end of the building, here in the corner of Glendale and Stanford Way.
Your map's not up, if you, if you're referring to it. Thank you.
Here on the map, as you can see, you know, here in the, the last occupancy in the building at the corner of Glendale and Stanford Way. So, in the city of Sparks, any sort of vehicle sales use is required to be in the industrial district and is required to receive a conditional use permit prior to being able to operate, and that's why this, this item is here. Auction locations are actually permitted use, but because they're the, the sale of vehicles, that's, that's why Planning Commission is seeing this item. These auctions will be held primarily online, although the, the materials will be held at the site for people to be able to come and view what they're, they're bidding on, if they want something other than the pictures that are online, which is the case often with, with vehicles, as you can imagine. Visiting the site will be by appointment only Monday through Thursday for, for potential bidders, and will be open to the public Friday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. till 4:00 This use would require nine parking spaces. They have 20 parking spaces, as you can see in this diagram, that are guaranteed by their lease. They also have room to store up to 15 vehicles inside. There are, there have been concerns brought up by building and fire about the storage of vehicles inside, and the applicant is working with them to make sure that those concerns are being addressed. The current plan is to use a dolly or lift system that would be able to roll those vehicles inside and without them ever having to be started, and the batteries would be disconnected just to be able to provide an extra level of security and safety while those vehicles are stored inside. So, conditional use permits, as mentioned in the last item, have five findings that need to be met. Finding C1 requires that the proposed use is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does allow for vehicle sales in the industrial district, subject to a conditional use permit. This also supports goals NG1 and NG2, which both relate to the provision of non-residential, non-residential land uses and a variety of them. Finding C2 requires compatibility with adjacent land uses. All of the adjacent land uses are industrial, or the zoning is all industrial. There are a variety of semi-commercial uses within this strip center. This would be a similar use to them and would have similar operating hours. Finding C3 addresses the impairment of natural resources. This site was developed in 1982, and they are occupying an existing space, so the staff felt there is no additional impact to natural resources with this request. Finding C4 requires that identified impacts be addressed. Staff feels these have been addressed through the staff report. And finding C5 requires that the, that this item be properly noticed. Public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on June 21, and 34 notices were mailed to all property owners within 500 feet. Staff is recommending approval of this item, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. It's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak? Okay. With none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioner for comments, questions.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Are there any restrictions? It says that they'll have the capacity to store 15 vehicles inside the building for display. If they exceed that capacity, would they be able to use the parking that's outside to show any of their auction vehicles?
I don't know that was specifically addressed as we went through this. I don't see why they couldn't use those parking spaces. As was mentioned, they do have only nine required parking spaces for this kind of use, and so they would have 11 parking spaces in addition. I think it was anticipated that those cars would be stored inside. So, i-if one is outside, it would not be intended that that was its permanent location until sale. sale. It would be outside during a transitional period. The applicant may have more specific, he is here, may be able to answer more specifically what their intention is.
Ask the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Gary Hornman, 1720 Legacy Village Road in Reno, Nevada. Would you mind repeating the question, please?
Well, I was just wondering if there was ever a need to have vehicles, not necessarily stored, but when you have people visiting your site, will they be in the parking spaces outside the facility instead of inside? Because you have only the capacity to store, what, 15 vehicles, so?
12 to 15. The agreement we made with Fire Marshal was there would be no review of the automobiles inside the building. They would always be outside in the parking spaces that are provided, so there would never be people and cars in the building at the same time. So the previews that would be held Friday and Saturday and in the morning on Sunday would be held outside. The vehicles would be held outside, and that's where they would be previewed.
So how many total parking spaces are there outside?
20.
20? And if you have 15 vehicles outside, how many parking spaces?
On the Saturday parking spaces, we counted an additional 45 parking spaces in the facility because no one is open on Saturday except the flag store, and they were delighted to hear that we would be open on Saturday because they have minimal traffic on Saturday. In an adjacent location on Saturday, all of the industrial businesses are closed, there's an additional 38 parking spaces available in the same driveway access to our unit. There is also substantial on-street parking on Stanford. So there's, I think, ample parking.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Brott. I move to approve conditional use permit CU 18-0010 associated with PCN 18-0031, adopting findings C1 through C5, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the two conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Reed, second.
Do you have a first and a second? Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Fuehns?
Hey, my mic worked. Commissioner Fuehns, yeah, and I guess this is probably for staff, again, moving forward. On the analysis, it says 20 parking places, and then on your map, shows 19. So there's a little bit of a difference there. It's not a huge deal since it's 8.5 parking places are mainly what's needed, but the map's wrong. Other thing that, you know, again, on the parking analysis, it's kind of, I know parking can be the theme of the night, but it says, "In addition, the applicant has arranged with surrounding tenants and the property manager to have access to additional parking spaces during that." And it's written in the analysis page, but I would like to see the agreements in the staff report. Not saying that I'm against this project, but I was just saying that it'd be nice to see in the staff report.
Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to general business, PCN 18-0030, consideration on a request to sponsor an amendment to the 2012 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan.
Good evening, Chair Warren VanderWaal, members of the Planning Commission. I am Armando Ornelas, the Assistant Community Services Director. This is, this item is the result of a request on the part of the Washoe County School District to the City of Sparks to consider sponsoring an amendment to the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to relocate an existing regional utility quarter. The Truckee Meadows Regional Plan identifies all of the above-ground and underground regional utility quarters and sites, and the purpose for doing so is specified in Goal 3.8 of the Regional Plan, which reads as follows. "The Regional Plan will establish, maintain, promote the use of, and protect the future expansion of identified utility quarters and sites for transmission of electricity and promote the use of these quarters for the placement of other utilities." In other words, the purpose of defining these quarters in the Regional Plan is to maintain their use and to have them be available for multiple utilities if possible. They are hard to establish because of the nature of the use, and so the goal was to, really, to be able to preserve them. And in the instances where, you know, change is required to, you know, for that to be identified in the Regional Plan so that, you know, all of the various entities that would be affected by that know that. Policy 3.81 under that goal requires a Regional Plan Amendment for the removal or the establishment of a regional utility quarter. As I already noted, the Washoe County School District is seeking sponsorship of this amendment because they are looking to move that existing utility quarter identified in the 2012 Regional Plan. So if I could have the overhead? Okay. Thank you. So, these are the Wild Creek properties. The blue line across more or less the center of the site indicates the location of the existing regional utility quarter and the existing transmission line that is owned by NV Energy. The red line reflects the proposed relocation of the quarter, and it remains within, or would remain on the Wild Creek property. And the reason, as I understand it, for requesting the relocation of the quarter is basically to improve the utility of the site for their purposes, which are, you know, which include the construction of the proposed new high school. So, on the site, the existing nine hole, or an existing nine-hole golf course, executive course would remain on the southern part of the site and the southeastern part of the site. And then in terms of the school facilities, the yellow bubble, if you will, indicates the primary building site for the high school, and then the green bubble indicates accessory uses such as ball fields and the like. So again, the goal here was, on their part, is to improve the utility and the redevelopment potential of site by moving the utility quarter to the north. Construction of structures in designated utility quarters is prohibited by the Regional Plan, hence the need to relocate the site if you want to really maximize its utility. And as I noted, moving the utility quarter and the existing transmission line requires amending the Regional Plan. Pursued to NRS 278.02727, Regional Plan Amendments must be sponsored by the City of Sparks, the City of Reno, Washoe County, or the Regional Planning Commission itself. The Washoe County School District has asked the City of Sparks, given that this line and this utility quarter is located in our jurisdiction, to consider sponsoring the amendment. If the Spark City Council and ultimately the Regional Planning Commission sponsor the amendment to realign the utility quarter, then it will be up to the Regional Planning Governing Board to make determination as to whether or not the quarter can be moved, and they will do it based on the, on its impact on six components of the Regional Plan, and that would be based on analysis that Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency staff will provide to the RPC and to the Regional Planning Governing Board. So, really, what we're doing today is asking the Planning Commission to consider advising the Spark City Council to sponsor the amendment, and if the City Council sponsors the amendment, that does not move the utility quarter, it simply initiates the process for Regional Planning to consider the proposed relocation of the quarter. Staff is recommending to you, that you recommended to the City Council, to sponsor the amendment because the relocation of the quarter provides more flexibility for potential redevelopment of the Wild Creek property. Obviously, it's in this instance for the purpose of the proposed school, but in general, it would increase the utility of the site for any redevelopment, and because the regional utility quarter can be relocated within the property in compliance with the intent of Goal 3.8 of the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. In other words, if Goal 3.8 involves the preservation of these quarters for regional utilities, doing so on the site would be consistent with that goal of the 2012 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, in our view. So that concludes my presentation, and I would, I'll do my best to address any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I was requested by Legal to disclose that I am a current candidate for the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees for District B, which encompasses this request. So with that, do any of the commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Armando, has the city ever done a regional plan amendment to move a utility corridor? I know we've done in the past amendments to establish new quarters. I'm just curious if in the City of Sparks, if there's ever been a regional plan amendment to move a utility corridor?
Commissioner Carey, I frankly don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
I have a question. On page four, it states, "If the Washoe County School District does not move forward with construction of the school on the site, it will leave the property better suited for redevelopment." Currently, what is that property zoned?
It's public facility.
Okay, so what can be on there?
Well, a public facility like a school could be, obviously fits with that zoning designation. If, you know, 10 or 20 or 30 years down the line, this site was to be, someone was looking to redevelop the site for some purpose, assuming that no schools constructed, you know, it would require the appropriate master plan and zoning code changes or rezonings to do anything with it, but, you know, other public facilities could go on the site. It's just, you know, it's just more, you know, and if you look at the site, it's a logical relocation if you want to get the most out of the site.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is so that if the school district didn't do it, and the golf course sold, it could sell to a private entity, could they then develop it? They would have to do a master plan amendment, correct? Come through here and say, okay, we want to develop it into housing or something like that? Would they be able to do that?
Yeah, it would require a, if it was, if it was used, it's not allowed on a site designated public facility, then it would require a comprehensive plan, land use amendment, and it would require rezoning the site to whatever zoning designation, you know, fit with the use, and then whatever other entitlements might be required in, you know, conditional use permit, whatever it might be.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Fuehns?
Commissioner Fuehns, thank you, Madam Chair. Armando, just, and maybe just help me on this. The property owner is currently RSCVA in Washoe County. The developer's Washoe County School District, so that, kind of, and said in the, on the background, that the Washoe County School District is in the process of purchasing the land at 3,500 Sullivan Land, which is the Wild Creek Golf Course. So can you just kind of put through the timeline, kind of, why the, kind of, the process of the purchasing? And why, I get that is probably a question for the applicant, that if it's in the process, and we've heard some public comment today about some injunctions of some lawsuits and different things. So let's say we do go, say, hey, yeah, we would like to, at least, because it visually makes sense to relocate a corridor around, you know, going right through, currently, which is a golf course, it makes sense to go around it. If you did that, who would be, and let's say the school does not go through, live in that, and who would eventually be paying for the corridor relocation if it's in the process? And it may be a better question for the applicant.
Well, I will refer that question to the applicant, but I would say that in general, whoever wants to do something with the site is probably the party that's going to be responsible for paying for the relocation of the land.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name's Pete Etchar, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Washoe County School District. So I'll kind of try to answer your questions, and please fill me in anything else you would like me to answer. So to go back on the property ownership right now, you are correct, it is actually owned by Washoe County and the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority. We propose to both of those entities, Washoe County and the RSCVA, a term sheet with the preliminary appraisal values for basically the proposed land acquisition structure of the deal. That was done on December 12th of 2017. Both those entities agreed to the term structure of the deal, along with the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. We, the agreement was that we would purchase approximately 75 acres of the property based on appraised value in the final parcel map. So the process right now that we're in is we've submitted a parcel map to the City of Sparks for review. We actually have an appraiser doing the final appraisal on the value of the property. We would also be purchasing approximately 318 acre feet of water that goes with the property, and we would pay off the affluent agreement with the City of Sparks, approximately $1.3 million, and then enter into new affluent agreements with the City of Sparks for the uses that we would have in Washoe County. We would also enter into an affluent agreement with the City of Sparks for the uses they would have on the remaining property, including golf. RSCVA receives back their initial purchase price of $980,000, and Washoe County receives sufficient land, water rights, and approximately $2.75 million to be used for public purposes or golf at the Wild Creek property. So that's the current status of the agreement. When we finalize that parcel map and the final appraisal, then we will be going back to those two entities to consummate the deal. As far as the lawsuit that you asked about, we've been told by our attorneys to go forward and do not slow down. Attorneys from the Washoe County School District, the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, Washoe County, and the City of Sparks have met, and they all feel confident that we should go forward and that this hopefully will be dismissed. We are waiting for that time in front of Judge Hardy, I believe.
I have a question, Madam Chair. Commissioner Reed. Just to be clear, from your map, it looks like you're still preserving some open space with the school being built. What is, so, is that going to be like a nine-hole golf course, or is there?
Again, Pete Etchar, Washoe County School District. We've tried to work with all the stakeholders in that area about what they want to see in this property. Obviously, we have worked diligently with Washoe County and the RSCVA on the property. We heard loud and clear they want to preserve golf. We heard from the golf community, the most viable part of this golf course is the nine-hole executive course. That's what they really want to save. The 18-hole course, from our conversations, was not as viable to save, and that's where they recommended that the school would go. We also want, we've heard from the stakeholders, the neighbors, and we want to keep as much open space as possible. So we showed a lot of different uses that can be done on this property, but right now, what I've heard from Washoe County is golf, and the school, and open space. So that's how we're proceeding. Now, obviously, after we purchased the 75 plus or minus acres to build the school, the rest of the remaining property is up to Washoe County of the uses they would like to do on that property. We are giving them the funding from purchasing this property to use to those public uses.
And as a, sorry, as a follow-up, who will maintain those open spaces, and it will go back to Washoe County and?
Washoe County.
All right. Thank you. I'm done.
Any other questions?
I have a question, and I'm going to try not to get out in the weeds. There is an ore ditch that runs through. Are you anticipating that you are going to have to come back through here to ask to have that moved, or do stuff around that, like what you're doing with the utility corridor?
I'm going to give a little bit of that to Armando as far as the process. I can tell you that we will be relocating the ore ditch. We've been meeting with the ore ditch company. We will be putting it on, basically, I would say, on the south side of the high school property. It'll be relocated so it doesn't have that circuitous route through the entire property.
Okay.
Commissioner VanderWaal, Armando Ornelas, Assistant Community Services Director. The entitlement process for this proposed high school will include a requirement for a conditional use permit as a result of the slopes on a portion of the site, and so all of those issues in terms of site design at that, essentially conceptual level, will be addressed through that process, including the relocation of, you know, of any drainage facilities.
Okay, so, so in other words, you're just going to keep, I guess what my question is, is so every time something needs to be moved or something like that, you're, we're going to see you in front of us with a conditional use permit on each different thing?
Well, the conditional use permit, there should be one, and, you know, the idea, essentially, that would be that the site plan review- And, you know, the idea, essentially, that would be the site plan review, and that would be the, really, the primary entitlement vehicle that will be used to review in this project. So, what I would say is that the actual development of the site will be reviewed and approved through that process, we hope to do it just once, and really capture everything that needs to be captured in that one, in that one process.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
Commissioner Brock here. I just have a comment, and I just have a very difficult time approving something based upon a pending sale, and I'm having a difficult time working through that.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Pete Etchar, again, Chief Operating Officer, Washoe County School District. Before we spent any money on this site, before we started design work, we actually had a regional meeting on May 1st, 2017, where we had with City of Sparks, City of Reno, Washoe County, RSCVA, and the Washoe County School District to all talk about this project. We received unanimous, or not unanimous, but all the agencies voted to say, yes, we are going to cooperate with the, working together to build a high school at this site. Then we started the process. We went through a due diligence study. We've spent quite a bit of money making sure this was a good site for this school. The conclusion for that due diligence study was, yes, the Wild Creek site best meets the educational operational objectives of the district when it came to location, zoning, vehicular and pedestrian accidents, time to acquire, utilities, cost. The due diligence report does not indicate that any site, the site has any constraints that would preclude the construction of a high school, and the site provides multiple layouts for the, to provide for a high school, recreational and public amenities, and open space opportunities. We are very committed to this site. We are spending the money right now to design this school. We have had assurances, again, going through the framework of the deal with the Washoe, with Washoe County and the RSCVA, that they've agreed to sell us this property once we come forward with the final parcel map and appraisal for the property, which we are in the process of doing. We understand there's a lawsuit out there. There was nothing added new to this lawsuit that we hadn't already seen before. The attorneys were very confident that, you know, they could address anything in that lawsuit. We will not be doing this regional plan amendment corridor, moving the corridor if it own the property. So right now, we're going through the process to make sure that we have the approval so we can move this power line, and then once we own the property, we'll be moving the power line.
Mr. Ornelas.
Armando Ornelas, Assistant Community Services Director. Commissioner Brock, it's really very common that, we have cases that come before you where the applicant is in fact not the owner of the property. So, as an example, the Quarry Project, the partnership that, that, you know, that brought forward all those applications for that project was not the owner of the property. It's, it's, in development anyway, it's quite common.
Okay, I, I have one more comment. My concern here is the cumulative effect of everything. I realize that you guys have a study that has said, okay, this is the best place, and this and that, and everything else, but within that study, is there a traffic report? Is there a flood mitigation report? Is there, are there things like that? Because my biggest concern is, from my understanding, Wild Creek is, it helps with flooding and runoff and things like that. When you build above that, we're going to have issues with percolation, and then we're going to have runoff that's going to run down into McCarran and down into, fortunately, the neighborhood I live in. I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the traffic. Traffic on McCarran, right now, is so backed up, and I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about if we're having children try to cross four lanes of traffic to get up in there. So, I mean, I just, I'm having some hard times with this because of the fact that there are just, there, I feel, and in this is my opinion, there are some health and safety issues, not only to future students, if there's a high school, but just surrounding.
Pete Etchar, Washoe County School District. As part of the due diligence study, all those factors were looked at, whether it's drainage, traffic, all of those. And again, the result was, this is the best site for us to build this new school at. Now that we're going into design, we're currently in schematic design for the school itself, we have experts in all of those fields that are looking at that. We are very familiar with the drainage issues, we're very familiar with the traffic issues, and I think we found some really good solutions of how we're going to have the traffic come into the site. We're very fortunate that about half the traffic right now comes in from the Sun Valley area, the other half comes in from the Reno direction. So we split the traffic very well going into the school site. On the drainage issue, I'm very familiar with that, I actually designed the dam that's located above this, this property. We know we're going to transport, convey the 100-year storm event through the site. We plan on making this better than it is today. That's our goal. We always want to make things better than they are today when it comes to flood mitigation. Our bottom line is for the Washoe County School District is, you know, we've came in to, and we're very fortunate, we're very pleased with the community to support us with WC-1. We've got to get caught up. We need to build schools. We have overcrowded schools. Spanish Springs, Spanish Springs High School is overcrowded. The current attendance boundary area for HUG will go to this new school, as will the rest of the north half of Sun Valley, to relieve Spanish Springs High School so that we can have room for development that is occurring here in the City of Sparks. We feel this is a fantastic location for this high school, and we are very fortunate that there is this opportunity to build an infill project. When you start talking about 75 acres of land in an urban area, really difficult. And so we feel very fortunate that the RSCVA and Washoe County actually wanted to dispose of this, this property. We feel in many ways, to be honest with you, that we are saving Wild Creek. Wild Creek was offered up to the City of Sparks, was offered up to Washoe County for free to take over golf operations. Neither entity wanted the, wanted the land, wanted the golf operations. We came in to offer that, we wanted to build a high school here, put money into this project, and save the most viable part of this golf course. We have every intention through the design process to make sure that we are building the best school that we can at this location and address all of the issues you brought forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuehns.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Fuehns, and I have to agree, traffic and flood are all real concerns, especially with any infill development, but we're looking at sponsoring right now just a utility corridor around essentially a location that's probably going to make it a little bit more desirable anyway. So it's not, all those are great concerns, but it's not really what's in front of us tonight. What's in front of us tonight is moving a utility corridor around even the golf, around the golf course. So I think that's what, I think, even though all those are really big concerns, that I think are really not relevant on a utility corridor move, is what I, what I see, so. Even, we had heard public comment around today that even, you know, people that have hidden lines when they're golfing, even if it stays as a golf course, this is, what's in front of us tonight is moving it around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Carey.
I'll make a comment, thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly appreciate staff and the city council for allowing us to review this master, what could be a master plan amendment down the road. I can, with everything that's going on with the RSCVA, the county, the three local governments, and trying to look at different uses for this site, I think that this proposed regional plan amendment is appropriate to what's, what's going on, the reality we have with the conditions of the land today. I concur with staff's analysis on this one. I believe that utility corridors are very important, they're very important to keep in the regional plan. You know, a lot of important infrastructure flows through all those utility corridors that cross the county, and they're very important to preserve. I think with respect to this proposed amendment, moving it to the north, moving it further away from the homes, and whatever future uses on this site is, is a good thing for the region, and I think that even moving it to the north could also help with other potential future utilities that could go through this corridor. And that's a very important thing in this, in this region, is to maintain utility corridors. And I, I would encourage the city council to take a look at this, and maybe perhaps sponsor, if they feel appropriate, a regional plan amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Okay. Anything else? Mr. Carey?
With all that being said, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to forward a recommendation of support of PCN-18-0030, providing for the Sparks City Council to sponsor an amendment to the 2012 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to relocate a utility corridor based on the facts as set forth in the staff report.
Commissioner Reed, second.
Yeah, but first and a second, any discussion? Concurring then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next we'll move along to public comment. I have no request to speak. Okay, next, comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Carey.
I had a comment and a request for staff. There was a lot of discussion tonight about parking with the conditional use permits that we had, and I have a suggestion for staff, in their staff reports moving forward with parking analysis. I do appreciate the information and how it's broken down. I would suggest, maybe it might be helpful for the public, and certainly for this commissioner, is if at the beginning of the parking analysis section in the staff reports, if we could put a sentence that says, "The total number of required spaces is this, the applicant is providing this," and then go in the discussion, that would be really, really helpful. I also just wanted to congratulate the RTC, they're opening up the Southeast Connector tomorrow. It's a $300 million investment, so very, very excited for that and for Sparks. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Okay, we're adjourned.